Good morning. Welcome to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 7, 2020. I trust everyone had a great Christmas and a happy New Year. Time to get back to work today. I also want to let you know that Commissioner Gurley will be here shortly. He's running a little late this morning, but he's planning on being here. I have the invocation today. Vice Chairman Joe Doherty has the Pledge of Allegiance. The approval of the minutes, discussion of an adjustment of agenda. Mr. Hennicott?
We do have one walk-on that we do want to have.
In the invocation first and then the pledge. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to do the pledge and prayer first?
Yeah. Okay. Let's power heads, please. Dear Father, thank you for this day, that we're able to come together. And God, as we start this new year, I especially ask that you might give us the wisdom that we need to lead this county in a direction that is beneficial to all citizens. We thank you for your blessings upon our county, our state, and our nation. We thank you for a nation that we live in, that we can still express our opinions. Dear Father, as we move forward this year, we ask that you might give an added protection to our first responders, our police and sheriff and firemen, and especially our military as we see what's going on across the world today. We ask that you continue to bless us, give us the common sense that we need to do things according to your will, and these things are asked in your name. Amen. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we have the approval of the minutes from December 17, 2019. Mr. Chairman, I move approval. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. Now we're in the right place, Mr. Hennicott.
Yes, sir.
Discussion and adjustment of the agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to add one walk-on that we discussed in the pre-agenda meeting. That would be under the consent agenda number eight for wages. A motion to approve the Community Services Block Grant, Community Anti-Poverty Plan for Wayne Action Group for Economic Solvency, and this is for wages.
Okay. Any Commissioners have any questions or changes to the agenda, additions? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hennicott? Special presentation?
We have Appointment Committee?
That's afterwards.
Oh, I'm sorry.
See, it's a new year. We understand.
It is our formally serving board, and Harold will read out our...
All right, we'll begin with the one-year pins. Shanika Hall with the Tax Administration. And if you will, stand in front of the Commissioner so we can get a picture, a group picture Breann Hooker, Emergency Medical Services. Hunter Whitaker with the jail. Kevin Davis with the jail. Mary Harper, DSS Income Maintenance. George Hendricks with the jail. Christopher Johnson, School Resource Officer. Rebecca Stanley, DSS Income Maintenance. And Vicki Stanley, DSS Income Maintenance. All right, now our five-year pins. We'll begin with Leigh Ann Blanton with the Finance Department. Monquail Richardson with Facilities. Elizabeth Smith, Emergency Medical Services. Courtney Frey or Frye, Animal Control. I'm not sure which one. If I said it right, Frye, okay. Erin Harold with the jail. And Anitra Shuford with Veteran Services. That concludes our five-year. Next, we'll recognize our 10-year service pin recipients. Anne Brogdon with Child Health. Joyce Moore, DSS Income Maintenance. Randall Smith Powell with the Sheriff's Office. We'll move on to our 15-year pin recipients. Angelia Swinson Mitchell, DSS Regular Services. We're going to try our 20-years. We'll begin with Vicki Falconer with the jail. Octavia Mohammed, DSS Regular Services. Thank goodness he's here. Ray Brogdon with Sheriff's Office.
That was kicking you.
Christopher Peaton with the Sheriff's Office. We'll clap for you, too.
This is between 20 years of hard work.
Deborah Thorne, DSS Income Maintenance. All right, and then move on to our 25-years. And go ahead and get the last year as well while you're there. The next three that we're going to mention are 25 and 35-years, so that's incredible accomplishment. We'll start with our 25-years. Monica Callaway, Health Administration. Calvin Harvey, Emergency Services.
Come on, they're popping bombs.
All right, and then our 35-year pin recipient Lynn Hopkins with Solid Ways.
She's not a lot of friends, is she?
All right, if y'all will just look at the cameras, count of three. I know Joel's got the picture already. Congratulations to all of you.
We're good.
You're good.
This time, I'd like to open the floor up for public comments. If individuals would like to speak, if you would come up and state your name, address, and phone number, you have four minutes to come up to tell them.
And happy New Year. My name is Sylvia Barnes. I live at 1708 Laurel Street here in the city of Goldsboro. My phone number is 919-273-3632. I was asked to come on behalf of the NAACP and to let the Commissioners know that some people in the community are asking for some monitors on our school buses. They say that the disobedience, the behavior of the children, it is terrible. I don't know another word to say. I did speak with Mr. West, and he told me that I should start here because he doesn't have any money. And he said that we would need money. So that's the reason why I am here this morning, to inform you all that some people are saying that we need monitors on our school buses to keep down some of the noise, the behavior of the drivers of being distracted because of the conduct on the buses. And while I'm standing, I just wanted to say that I was at the Mount Olive Town Council meeting last night. I was not asked to come, but I went because I wanted to invite other people, which is also a part of the NAACP, to get involved in the tax. And so I was there, but I think that you all did a very good job of explaining what was needed, so I kept my seat until he hit the gavel to say we could go home. You all have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Chris Gurley, 169 East Wayne Road, Goldsboro, North Carolina, 275349197389705. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning. Most of y'all know me, but I am Chris Gurley, and I'm the candidate for District 5 Candidate Commissioner, which is being held by Commissioner Page. He is retiring this year. I'm running for that seat. A little bit about myself, I was raised in Wayne County, Belfast community. Went through the Wayne County Public School System, Belfast, Norway, and Charles Bay ACOG. 1987, I formed a business called Turf Master, landscape irrigation business here in Wayne County, and this year makes 33 years since I've owned and operated that business in Wayne County. 1984, I joined the Belfast Volunteer Fire Department. This year makes 36 years I've been a volunteer firefighter in Wayne County. Almost 20 of those years, I was the Fire Chief of Belfast. During that time, we acquired the only, or first I say rating of four in Wayne County. I still sit as the Senior Director on the North Carolina State Fire Association Board, Eastern Division, for 25 years. And I say all that to say this, I said aye aye, but I couldn't have done it without good people around me. I've had good, great employees, great clients and customers, and firefighters. It takes a week to make it work, and that's the reason I'm running for Wayne County Board of Commissioners. I have several ideas and goals and plans, but it's going to take a week to make it work. I've got a plan that I can, I think we can implement, that we can retain trained paramedics in our county. We've got the best fire service, volunteer fire service in the state. If you don't believe it, call the North Carolina State Fire Association, State Fire Officer's Office, because when they get in a bind, they call Wayne County. And that's what I wanted to do when we have an emergency situation across the state, that they call our EMS system. I want to implement a safe zone for our agriculture farms, so things don't happen like they did to Duplin County and Wayne. I've got a, I've made contact with several legislators to try to make that happen. Also, I want to improve our infrastructure at our intersections on their major highways. That's a long-term plan. I look long-term. I think you'll do a little background check on me. I'm a proven proactive leader, and I look forward to working with the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Thanks, sir.
Anyone else wish to speak? If you will, come up and give us your name, address, and phone number, please.
My name is Phyllis Smith Candler. I live at 149 Candler Drive in Goldsboro, North Carolina. My phone number is 919-922-3225. A few, several days ago, I picked up the newspaper. Normally, I look at the obituaries first, but the front page got my attention because they said that we would not be, we would not be using the cards with the pictures on it to make sure that it's the right person that's voting. I spoke with one of the Commissioners, and he explained to me that a judge, one judge, took it upon himself to give everybody else what he wants them to have. I don't know how to change it, but I grew up knowing that I lived in a country where the people were free. We were not bandaged up with people that were, that did things all wrong all the time. When I was, when I was 18, my daddy took me to go in, and he showed me how to get where I could vote. I'm a citizen. I'm 70 years old, and I don't think I know, I don't think I need a judge to tell me if I want them to know who I am and have a picture. I don't know that it will change me being here, but I feel better knowing that I've given my piece. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Okay, if not, we will close the public hearing. We have Appointment Committee, Mr. Hennicott?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have one reappointment. Appointment Committee would like to recommend Ms. Beverly Decker to the Wayne County Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, and that's in form of a motion, sir.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, raise your right hand, please.
That's all we have today, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hennicott. Consent agenda.
To approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, or is there any further discussion or questions on our consent agenda at this time? Have a motion on the floor, all in favor of the consent agenda, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. Okay, we have new business. Catch a Glimpse by the Public Affairs Office.
This is Catch a Glimpse for January 2020. Wrapping up 2019, we covered the Michael Aram Economic Development Announcement, and stopped by the kitchen, learned how to make sweet potato brownies, and Jessica Strickland talked to us about winter planting. The ground was broken on the Southern Wayne Competition Gym, and we covered the 2019 State of the Community. Staff participated in a hazardous materials exercise at EOC Activation, and we livestreamed the Goldsboro Christmas Parade. Our friends from the United Way stopped by to talk about their fundraising efforts, and we produced a video honoring our service members and first responders away from their families on Christmas. This has been Catch a Glimpse. We'll see you again next month.
Thank you. County Managers' comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to mention the sales tax discussion we had with the town of Mount Olive last night. Last night, I appreciate the Chairman Mayo and also Commissioner Cromarty attending. We presented our request for their approval of a resolution in support of the Quarter Cent Sales Tax Resolution, and as Ms. Barnes said, it did pass last night, and it passed unanimously. And again, as we mentioned before, that we have gone to Fremont, and it passed as well in Fremont, and it passed unanimously. So we are getting out to our community, we are getting the support for the education sales tax referendum, so we're still pushing on that. We do have some upcoming presentations that we will be doing, and I can send you a list of this, but I want to let you know, we'll be at Walnut Creek at their Town Council meeting on January 22nd, doing a presentation to the Goldsboro Rudder Club on January 28th, Town of Pikeville on February 3rd, the City of Goldsboro on February 17th, and Seven Springs Town Council on February 18th. So we are getting out. If you would like to go, or you're interested, I would love to have you participate, and we'll get you the list of where we're going, but the calendar is not full, so we're available to go wherever and whenever we're asked, churches, the NAACP. Ms. Barnes will be glad to go, and if you'd like for us to make a presentation, we'd be more than happy to. So we're getting out, and we're really selling the message, and I think the message is really being heard by our community and by the leaders of those towns. And also, did want to remind you that we do on Thursday, the 16th, is our Goal Setting Retreat. It's our annual Goal Setting Retreat that will be held at the Maxwell Center. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Board of Commissioners' comments. Mr. Cromarty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to really give a shout-out to Ms. Barnes for being in Mount Olive last night. Thank you for coming down to Mount Olive. But I think it's also important for the community to know that there is a cross-section of support for the sales tax that's going to be specifically designated to fund the schools, and it's very important in all segments of the community to understand this and support. So thank you very much, Ms. Barnes. I would also like to continue with something that Ms. Barnes had a leadership in. Last Sunday afternoon, I had an opportunity to be invited to the NAACP Jubilee Day, and I'm a history major, and sometimes things, I guess sometimes ought to slip past me, but it was interesting that a young lady got up and made a presentation. And Jubilee Day is a very important day for the minority community because it represents the fact that President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation in 1863, and that was the signal, and I put this delicately, that was the signal that black folk were free and had a part in this great United States, because in 1776, there was no such opportunity. And so that day is very important to the minority community, and I would like to thank NAACP for bringing a light to that and keeping that effort going. Also, this month, the Martin Luther King Day will be celebrated, and there will probably be many celebrations, but one will be held at the First Congregational Church in Dudley, and I think it's the 19th, if that's a Sunday afternoon. And so I expect that to be a very rousing, important, fruitful afternoon, and in lieu of not being a member of that church, I think I can safely invite everyone to be there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Page?
I want to thank staff for doing a great job getting out and educating the public about the Quarter Cent Sales Tax. It's truly important. We've fallen so far behind over the years in Wayne County in our infrastructure and our schools, and this is a great way to do that without impacting property owners. And I hope you continue that, and I'm glad to see there's a cross-section in the community that's showing support for this. I'm certainly glad. And now that I'm feeling much better health-wise, if you would get that list out to me, I could probably be there, too, if somebody's means to help support, which I have not done so here in the past. But again, thanks for that. Christmas was great. Grandchildren got me sick, so everybody else probably got the same mess, but I'm feeling much better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good to see you, Commissioner Gurley. Do you have some comments you'd like to make?
Excuse my tardiness this morning.
That's okay.
A couple of things come up late yesterday I wasn't expecting, but I enjoyed the holidays as much as anyone did, and I'm sure everybody's kind of glad to get back in the regular swing of things I am. Kind of won't be able to wake up one morning to figure out what day it is, rather than trying to decide which way to go anyway. Busy holiday season, enjoyed it, and ready to get back and kick off 2020.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Yes, enjoyed all the good holidays, had a good time, visited a lot of family, did not attend any committee meeting because January is when I start like making my rounds. So good to see all of y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Hennicott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder, I think I love you, got your invitation. The Wayne County Firefighters Association Installation of Officers will be at Lane Tree on January 21st at 7:00, and I think y'all got your invitations. Like to see as many of you there as you possibly could, Mr. Manager and the staff. I'm quite sure y'all got invitations also, and appreciate if y'all could attend. Also, if you would, print me a hard copy of the dates.
I'll send the list out there.
I can't remember, and I have to have a hard copy.
Yes, sir.
Y'all will get there one day. Also, in closing, I want to let's remember that Goldsboro and Wayne County is a military family. There's a lot going on in the Middle East right now. We've got friends and neighbors that are over there. Let's pray for their safety and their families back home. In eastern North Carolina, it is a heavily military community with Fort Bragg, Jacksonville, Cherry Point, Seymour Johnson. And I don't know, but I feel confident that all of our bases in eastern North Carolina has probably got people involved in the Middle East right now. And we have a volunteer military service now. All these men and women volunteered to be able to do what they're doing. They didn't ask to go. They're just carrying on a tradition that started many, many, well, a couple hundred years ago for this country, to sacrifice what they do so we can have the freedom that we have in this country. We may agree or disagree with some of the pains that goes on, but the priority is remembering those men and women and their families back home that is sacrificing so much for us to have the freedom that we've got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I want to talk today about school facilities. The county, as a government, must provide the school facilities within Wayne County. That means we have to raise the money to provide those facilities. That's on us, it's on our budget. Our funding is basically from property taxes. And property tax owners, you ask them, and they'll tell you, there's only a limit to what they can provide. The county is required by law to provide the funding for the new law that has been passed, which requires a reduction in the classroom size of K through 3. And that means that they want fewer students in each classroom, thereby, we've got to build more classrooms to fulfill that, because they're smaller classroom sizes. That cost is estimated to be over $10 million. Again, I refer back, our primary source of revenue is, in fact, property tax. The lottery process, proceeds, rather, that was passed years ago was to provide funding for school facilities, but that has been nibbled away to where it's only 40% of those proceeds that are going to school facilities. Wayne County has used its lottery funds that we receive every year to, and have obligated it, to pay for the two new Spring Creek and Grantham Middle Schools. So for that 20-year period of time, those dollars are allocated for payment and retiring that debt. Now, one of the arguments I have heard in the community is that, well, what is to prevent if this passes? What is to prevent some future board to redirect those dollars somewhere else? Well, to prevent that, we are, in fact, going to obligate all of those proceeds from the Quarter Cent Sales Tax. All of the dollars that are obligated are going to be obligated for the repayment of the loan that we're going to obtain to provide all of these needed facility improvements. So for 20 years, nobody sitting in these chairs is going to be able to divert it. The Quarter Cent Sales Tax is undoubtedly the fairest way to spread this burden across our entire citizen. So with that in mind, I wanted to explain some of the concerns of the community in regards to the lottery, what happened to it, in regards to whether or not the dollars would be diverted, and to explain why, really, this is the fairest way to go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Well said, a lot of good comments. I did want to remind the Commissioners that don't get used to these short meetings that we're experiencing right now. It's about to change, okay? But just to piggyback a little bit on what's been said, last night at Mount Olive talking about the Quarter Cent Sales Tax, I made the statement that we, as Commissioner Daughter has already alluded to, we as Commissioners are responsible for educational facilities in Wayne County. We have to deal with the situation with what we have on our table right now. We cannot anticipate what the state's going to do, the federal government, anybody else. It's our responsibility. So if we happen to get something down the road from the state or whatever, that's going to be to our plus in the education system. But we have to look at it, at what we have in front of us today. The other thing that I brought out last night at Mount Olive, and the citizens and parents of children here in Wayne County are very concerned about this, including in this rollout project that's going to be rolling out this coming Thursday, there's about 1.4 or 1.8 million, I can't remember exactly which, for school security. School security is a big issue and concern to all citizens of Wayne County. We have children in school or not. It's a big concern. Yeah, the school board has been chipping away at our securities. They're improving them with the monies they have, but a part of this is going to deal with school security, which we desperately need. So having said that, I guess our number-one priority right now is to see if we can get and market this Quarter Cent Sales Tax, and Commissioner Daughter is correct, this is going to be an ironclad situation, and the public needs to understand this, that future boards, it's going to be written up in such a way that future commission boards cannot change this cycle and what this money's going to be used for. Hopefully, this board will stay pretty well where it's at after the elections, minus a couple that's going to retire. But if I'm on this board, which if my head holds up, I will, because I am unopposed, I promise the citizens of Wayne County that this money, as long as I'm Commissioner, I will be an advocate, that this money will be spent strictly for facilities and education in Wayne County. That's all I have. Any other comments? Okay, I think we need to get back in closed session.
Yes, sir, for the same matters that you went in before.
Okay, I have a motion. Okay, I'll raise your right hand. Thank you.